Hey, everyone. We will begin. Oh, somebody's got a... Terry, do you have your? Okay, so do we have everybody's volume off? Okay. We will call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Next motion on the agenda is moved by councillor, maybe seconded by councillor Fody, that the agenda be adopted as circulated. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's carried. I might also add that councillor Lackey has sent his regrets for this evening. He is unable to attend. Number three on the agenda is declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Are there any interests to declare? Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor, through you. Item number 6.3, the planning report regarding the municipal heritage properties register. Two of the properties on the register, one of them belongs to my parents and also one is a cemetery that I sit on the board of.
Okay, so we have an interest declared on that 6.3. And we'll ask you to leave the room at that point in time for deliberations. Okay, any other interest to declare? I see none. So we will move forward with number four, which is in camera, and there is no in-camera session, and moving along to number five, which is delegations and presentations. So Dr. Michael Bell and Douglas McIntosh and the Thousand Islands Alliance River Advocates, Tiara reinstatement of the township's environmental advisory committee. So we'll ask them to come forward to the laptop where you can sit and be viewed by those watching, and the microphone will be there with you as well. We'll just wait and make sure that your camera is turned on so we can see your face. There we go. Okay, now we can see you, and those at home watching can also see you. So thank you for coming.
Okay. Thank you for having us, too. My name is Douglas McIntosh. Quite a few of you know me, and my wife and I have lived on the Parkway for more than 60 years. And I served on council for three terms, 1997 to 206, as a representing of Ward One. We have some suggestions today to make for you. There'll be three of us. I'll be first, and then my Dr. Michael Bell, who's sitting beside me, will be then. My wife will finish off. So I'd like to introduce Tiara. For those who may not know the history, Tiara was quickly formed in 1975 when Parks Canada armed with 360 million of federal funds for countrywide expansion, proposed to take over 30 square miles of our private property islands and mainland south of Highway 401. It was in order to enlarge their small holdings here. The threat of expropriation was real. Tiara had seen firsthand what they had expropriated in Kuchabiquack, National Park in New Brunswick. It took Tiara five years and thousands of hours of volunteer work. In the end, we made Parks Canada back off. A key method that we established with the federal minister in charge of Parks Canada was to contact him directly. We insisted that after a meeting where it became clear to the minister that his assistant deputy minister was filtering the news. The result was being able to fend off Parks Canada because we got permission to contact the minister directly, getting around his staff. We were then able to fend off Parks Canada, which was that the township could still enjoy control of its own planning of the islands and mainland south of 401. If Tiara had failed, all the township planning for the islands and waterfront would have gone out of the window, and the area would instead have been subject to very unpopular federal park rules. The result was the retaliation, the realization that the Thousand Islands area was internationally recognized for its renowned national beauty, thereby bringing in crowds of tourists, and that special plans for the Thousand Islands area was adopted straight into the first official plan. Its aims are still there, Section 592, called the Thousand Islands Area Special Policy. The problem is that such planning requires a balance between demands from development and the natural ecology. Unfortunately, this hasn't always been the case. We have come to council today to urgently request that it considers reinstating the Environmental Advisory Committee, the EAC, which should be of assistance in regaining this balance. We hope you will give this some serious thought. I'm now going to turn the mic over to Mike Bell, who will give us more details about this. Then my wife is going to sum up with some research that she's been doing. So, Mike, it's up to you now. You have to have to take that one. Okay.
Thank you. Well, my name is Mike Bell, and I'm here representing the Tiara Board. You've already heard from Douglas. I asked Douglas if he'd be embarrassed if I referred to him as one of the founding fathers of Tiara, and he said, "Well, that's much better than previously when you introduced me as a recovering lawyer." So, anyway, I live on Hill Island, two doors up from the Clearcut and the helipad, and I trust most of you have seen the befores and afters. And I would consider myself a witness to the ecological stresses that can befall a peaceful neighborhood. In fact, the locals now call it Hell Island. That's not funny when you look at the pictures. So as Douglas mentioned, Tiara was founded in 1975, and their successful activism stopped the major expropriations, leaving 30 square miles of a special policy area that is under the jurisdiction of TLTI. And I need to quote from the official plan for this special policy area, which says, "The Thousand Islands area is known for its world-class natural beauty and special character, and it will be protected from overdevelopment to ensure that it remains a natural and cultural showcase for the future." And that should be our goal. Are we there yet? Well, not yet, but with a greater emphasis on environmental stewardship, we can get there. Now, living here, it seems there's a general underappreciation of the enviable qualities of this unique township. For one, it's part of a UNESCO Biosphere Reserve, and Tiara's nomination of the Upper St. Lawrence as a Canadian Heritage River is nearing acceptance. This will further benefit ecotourism and TLTI even more, which is arguably the main driver of our economic well-being. Now, I need to mention that there's an oversight measure in a heritage river designation requiring, and I'll quote, "visible attractiveness of the environment." I'll repeat that. Visible attractiveness of the environment. When I look down the road at Hell Island, I fear we're falling a bit short. I can still picture my dejected-looking neighbor with tears in his eyes telling me of watching the marine barge heading upstream filled with Clearcut 200-year-old white pine and pitch pine trees torn from the west point of Hell Island. As a biologist and former senior park warden, his considered remark was that it would take nature 1,000 years to recover. That's truly sobering. The poor man was visibly traumatized from witnessing the wanton destruction of this pristine landmark. So, some positive comments from Tiara. We must congratulate Tuwilt, the Thousand Islands Watershed Land Trust, on their ongoing environmental and educational initiatives, especially for children who are the future custodians of this beautiful area. And an environmental advisory committee could coordinate people like Tuwilt and Charleston Lake and Red Horse Cottageers Association in a seamless fashion, following the direction of council, to assume a much-needed role in communicating important environmental issues to all residents. In summary, you can't protect what you don't understand. We're entering a new, challenging era of environmental change and accelerating demands for development, and that's why we need a supported environmental advisory committee to help chart a positive course for us all. So I'd like to pass the baton to Blue.
Do I have to do anything? No. Okay, we've talked about the responsibilities. With these responsibilities in mind, we are asking council to reinstate the Environmental Advisory Committee, the EAC, which existed from 2016 to 2018. An EAC could benefit the township in many ways. One would be to bring an environmental perspective to planning matters. Mike has alluded to a highly visible point on Hill Island where 200-year-old trees were clear-cut. There's another example on Stratford Lane where trees could have been saved by better site design or maybe just less blasting. In both cases, the damage isn't just visual, but also environmental. An EAC could help with education, explaining to landowners and contractors that shoreline vegetation is important to maintain clear water, clean water, prevent erosion, and provide habitat for fish and other wildlife. Understanding the reasons for the 30-meter waterfront setback would make compliance easier. Stewardship is a common focus in the mandates of EACs in other Ontario municipalities, and there are lots of them who do have EACs. Our township, in fact, seems to be an exception in not having an EAC. Two examples of this include Algonquin Highlands and Perth County, whose EACs run education programs. When rules change, as with Muskoka's newly updated Tree Conservation Bylaw, it's easier to enforce them if the landowners understand why they are important. This township's previous EAC reported on their workshops and initiatives such as reducing landfill, upgrading sewage systems, improving water quality, and dealing with invasive plants. And these are just some of the things they did and tried to do and intended to do. These could be revived, and we could draw on the expertise of associations that Mike has mentioned, such as the Thousand Islands Watershed Land Trust and also Watersheds Canada up in Perth. There are many well-informed residents who we are sure would be willing to assist the township in reviving the EAC, and many qualified members of the public who would contribute by serving on it. The township would be seen as forward-thinking and proactive if it had a well-constituted EAC. In summary, we are urging council to consider reinstating it for the benefit of the whole township. Thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes the presentation delegation. So are there any comments or questions from members of council? Go ahead, Ms. Kelman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and for you. As I knew on council, I just wondered if perhaps the Director of Operations could give some background on the previous EAC that was in place, why it was disbanded, or why it stopped functioning as a committee?
Thank you, through your worship. The EAC didn't exist when I came here. So I arrived at the municipality in 2020, and there wasn't a functioning EAC at that point. Council had formed a Waste Management Working Group in 2021, and that's how we've operated since then, as the Waste Management Working Group.
Any further... Go ahead, Councillor Jameson.
Because we've had so many staff changes, it's not, you know, puts David on the spot. No, I appreciate the question. Other members of council will recall that we did post the Environment Committee for when we came on in 2019. And amidst so many other things that we were faced with, one of the things that was surprising was that no one applied. And in the midst of all the other things that were going wrong, and they were going very wrong, it just didn't go anywhere after that, because we were just, in my opinion, we were too preoccupied with other things. So the issue for us now is is a question of revisiting it in some capacity as we move forward, perhaps, but that's something for further discussion. But David mentioned, because Terry was chairing it and I was on it, the Waste Management Committee. I read every word of all those minutes from the committee, and there was a lot of very good stuff, because there were very good people and made some very good recommendations, but it was really, as the presenter provided us, it was focused on waste management. It was focused on those types of things that were very, quite practical in their own way, but could be very expensive. To the Director of Operations' credit, he grabbed hold of that, and now with respect to those minutes and that effort that those people made at the time, some of those things are beginning to move forward as we change how we treat our landfills and extending the life and mining them and doing all the various things we will ultimately do. So the reason I raise it is just to bring an assurance that while there was a lag into our council, period, as they seem to be forgotten in the previous time, we have acted upon the good work of many people that sat on that committee, and positively so. So appreciate the work they brought to the table, and now we have to look ahead.
Councillor Fody, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I agree with Councillor Jameson in that when we put the proposal out for the various committees, we very well may have not had any, or we didn't have near enough to continue with the EAC. I pose a question to those of you in the know. How many were on the previous committee?
I have a list somewhere. I haven't got it with... I think it was seven members, and one member was from council.
Okay, okay. That's fair enough. I mean, I could look back in my history, too, which, excuse me, which I did not, but I knew the knowledge was coming here tonight, so I'll take it from the good source.
The chair was Emily Conker.
Yes.
And there were a number of very well-qualified people on it.
I know Emily issued my neighbor. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Garrel, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. Given the recent changes and not-so-recent changes to the mandate of the CRCA, which had seemed to have risen to its pinnacle of of policy power, and the provincial government then kind of stripped them of a lot of that power. I'm guessing that your change of name and so on has been spawned in large part by what you consider the CRCA cannot any longer permit. They certainly have some permitting rules, but I read, everything I read is always preambled by our responsibility as Regulation 14806, which is natural hazards and man-made hazards and so on. But they don't any longer deal with many of the things, a few of the things that you have mentioned, i.e. setbacks and so on. So two issues that come to mind for me are the province has damaged, or pardon me, set them a different course. Secondly, we have in front of us now, at provincial level, the provincial policy statement, which is going to lead to the provincial planning of policy, policy planning, I think it is. And that is yet undecided. So I'd be curious, maybe not tonight, because it's pretty windy stuff, but I'd be curious to know how Tiara sees all that, and because those were some environmental protections, and it would be my impression that the province is pushing certain regulations or taking them away, which, and it falls on a very challenged planning department. I don't want to throw anybody under a bus, but the planning department is tasked with some very complex issues. Planning Act, some things fall to the Minister of Environment, not even this township's parameters. So the problem I have is if we have environmental committees, then it gets very complex very quickly about which act, which government, who has this, who has that. One vision may be a vision, but it's tough to enact regulation. And that would be an ongoing discussion that I would have to have personally with this council, because I pay attention to this stuff at the provincial level, and I recognize that our own planning department is under a hell of a pressure to make it work. And I'm kind of making a statement here, but the fact is, I have a challenge, understanding how even well-meaning an environmental committee making recommendations, and then it's the on-again, off-again of planning rules, Planning Act, provincial policy statements that are being rewritten as we talk. Everything is in flux. So is it trees we want to save? Is it development we want to control? Environmentally, that's a pretty broad brush for me. It's almost too broad, because we have lots of people telling us how to do things at the provincial level, and they have the power. They have the enactment. Constantly, I read that, and it's mind-boggling, frankly, to me. I think I'll end that statement. I probably confused a lot of people with my statements, but it's heartfelt, and I would really like to understand further what an environmental committee... I read the mandate from the last, and it's very complex, a very broad brush, and I don't see how we incorporate it properly, or what happens if we turn things down? What happens if the council says no? Stuff like that, it gets complex. So anyway, I'm done with my editorial, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Garrel. Are there any other comments or questions from council? And Madam Planner, did you want to add anything to that? Nope? Okay. Are there any questions from the gallery? Go ahead.
Wait a minute, start video.
No, don't worry.
I was just, I was going to say in response to what you were saying, Councillor Garrel, that one of the aims of the Environmental Advisory Committee could be to educate the public so that they want to do things which can be shown to be environmentally responsible. Whether the government forces them to do it or not, or wants them to do it or can't do it, I mean, we're talking about the reduced capabilities of the CRCA, for instance. But if people were educated to know that the value of leaving trees on the waterfront, they might be persuaded to do it, whether it was required of them or not. So it doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be aware of how laws are changing, PPS is changing, all these things are changing. Just go back to the fundamentals of understanding, as Mike said, understanding what you own, so that you can see how to preserve it, and because you want to.
Follow-up, Councillor Garrel.
I do thank you for that, but education can be approached in others in many, many ways. Committees are not necessarily the answer. Working groups, possibly. Working groups, in my mind, are quite efficient. If I had my druthers, that's the route I would take. Once again, my my concern would be the broad base of the previous EAC. I've read it this morning, and it's staggeringly broad. So I would prefer, personally, sitting on council, a little more fleshing it out that I would feel comfortable, because otherwise it just becomes a, to me, it becomes a lobby group, really. And I'm nervous about that as a councillor. So thank you.
So go ahead, Mr. Bell.
I think one way in which a committee would be very helpful is to do research that some people on it might have particular expertise and present that research to council, who would then be able to make decisions as to what to do with it. And so, yes, education, but also research. So a committee is beneficial in more ways than one, and usually have a bunch of different opinions that you can assess and how it applies, because in all of these things, we need to have a balance that has local acceptance. And there are many other jurisdictions in Ontario where they have quite rigid rules that we would think are not appropriate at all, nor would they be acceptable. But at least if you have somebody that's going to be able to do this research for you, it will make your job a lot easier. And that's aside from the rules and regulations from the province. As Blue says, it's a matter of being able to educate the public, and you can take that initiative with the knowledge that comes from the research from a good committee. And there are good people out there.
So I'll go back to Councillor Kelman, and then I believe there was a hand up in the gallery that I'll acknowledge. Go ahead.
Thank you again, Your Worship, and for you. When I was reading the mandate of the former EAC this morning, the concerns I had were, first of all, I don't know what was going on exactly with staff and council in the township then, but what I see now is that almost all of the items listed under the EAC's purview now, to me, seem redundant, because we have staff that do all of those things. And I appreciate that there would be a lot of expertise in the community, but I feel like that expertise is also on staff now and could be, and would have to be verified by staff anyway, regardless of what recommendations came from a committee. And also recognizing that right now, there might be lots of qualified individuals that are willing to volunteer their time to serve on a committee like this. The previous committee only really functioned for two years, and my another concern I have is continuity. So if there was turnover, if it's just ineffective, it could be a lot of work to go into something that, again, would be quite short-lived. So I really appreciate the education piece. I also really appreciated one of the items listed under the former mandate, and that was to be a coordinating I also really appreciated one of the items listed under the former mandate, and that was to be a coordinating hub for other environmental groups within the township that are functioning within the township. I think those are two great pieces. I think that might be better served as Councilor Gurrell said, through a working group and not a committee. But from what I have seen in my brief time on council, we do have a tremendous level of expertise on staff that have to take almost all of those factors into consideration when approving anything to do with planning or operations. So I do feel like a big part of what might, what was part of the former EAC would now just be redundant.
Thank you, Councilor Kelman. So there was a hand up in the gallery. Go ahead. If you'd like to come forward, we'll ask you to vacate the seats so that anybody who needs to speak can come to the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marnie Ross and I live at thirty four Stratford Lane. In twenty twenty one, I believe, our neighbors put in a plan. They had talked to us about it for quite a while, all summer. We discussed about how they probably have to take down three trees. And because they were going to put in a garage, we thought a garage was not the best use for on the river. But however, anyway. And then they cut down, every tree took away, every blade of grass, all the soil, and they blasted for five weeks. I have had two deaths in my family this year. That was the third. That it's it was just unbelievable that in this time of climate change, when people have understood that over, like the mass of everything made by humans is now weighs more than the mass of everything in nature. How can people still think that this is okay? That this is a balance? It is not. And so I don't know if you have biologists on staff, but that's the kind of people that you need to be able to understand this stuff. I think we all talk about, oh, you know, Muskoka, oh, don't be Muskoka. We were in Muskoka this fall and last, yeah, this, this spring. And my gosh, you can see trees everywhere, even in the middle of the cities. It looks like kind of a forest still. So they're doing way better than we are. I have, my neighbors on the other side have been told that part of the plan is that they need to have a retaining wall in this new, in this new house. So they're going to have to come and put part of that retaining wall on the neighbor's property. It's just going to have to be done. And then they're going to plant a bunch of trees on the neighbor's property. The neighbors sort of felt like it was just as a screen for them, you know? We really enjoyed the waters, getting to know them and everything. But I guess we should have been wiser, worldly wise, that maybe this isn't what it was going to be like in the end. It's going up taller than the trees. It's gone from lot line to lot line. They blasted down right beside our tree trunks and taken out all the roots. So there are a number of trees which will not survive. Everything's going to get dried out because of that. And other trees won't survive. And then there's no trees to help the other ones have a windbreak. So the wind will take some other trees away. So when we're talking about balance and we're talking about knowledge of the staff, I just think, you know, I really think we can do better. I really think we can do better. And I think it behooves you to know what's going on. I think it really does. You should come and see it. See what you think. Because, you know, they just think they can just do it.
Okay. Thank you. I actually am going to recognize somebody who's had their hand up online for a bit. So we have a member of the public who's watching, who's put their hand up, Joe Dandell.
Hi, it's Joel Dandelay.
Dandelay, sorry, my apologies. Go ahead.
No problem. So one of the things that's been underlying in it, in both the council's comments and from what Doug and Bill have been saying is that it's a balance. Yes, you have people on staff. Yes, there are people who are not on staff, who are, could be volunteers, who have knowledge that could be shared. But I think that, and again, speaking from our firsthand experience, I think some of the experience that is on staff is only looking at the individual applications. They're not looking correctly at, or, or long term is probably a better word, at the effects of the development that are going to happen to the neighboring properties. And case in point, once the property adjacent to us was clear cut of trees, the first windstorm that came through, we lost twenty two seventy foot trees. Now, for people who live in Ganonawway and Lansdowne and don't live on the island, that may not seem like a very important thing. But I'm sure most of those people get in boats and go down the river and can see the density of the trees on the outskirts of the islands. And then also see how those trees continue to be dense through the center of the islands. Once you take away that windbreak at the front and you expose those trees that were in the center of the island, or again, not the front line is probably the best description. Those trees weren't, they didn't grow facing the wind. They grew with a buffer in front of them. And we've had arborists on our property and they're saying that the devastation to our property will continue for ten to fifteen years because of the loss of the trees on the adjacent property. So part of the balance that has to happen is there has to be an understanding of the consequences to the development on a neighboring property. And I'm sorry, I'm in construction. We have to take account of what our build is going to do to the adjacent properties. It's, it is unfair and incorrect to say that property owner to property owner have to sort it out. It is something that the design stage has to evaluate correctly. And as I said, it has to be something that is not, here's the application on paper. Does it, does it pass all the box checks and balances on paper? Sure. But what is the long term effect of that build? On Stratford Lane, as it was mentioned, the build goes lot line to lot line and now it's going to spill over to the adjacent properties. That should never, in my opinion, never have been approved. Because the build has to be contained within its own property without damaging the adjacent properties. There are tree bylaws in most metropolitan cities now because of that exact problem. Damaging trees, rooting, root systems of trees on neighboring properties. Again, that's been developed because of the long term effects that have now been realized. So all of those aspects become part of the, the balance for an application for development. And they all have to be looked at. And having a committee outside of council or the township as a check to make sure those balances are in place, I think is invaluable. I don't want to have a committee that then is just there to argue everything. I think everyone here wants, understands development is going to happen. But it has to be responsible development. And the only way that it can be responsible development is if everybody has a say. The Hella pad's a whole different thing. Transport Canada is an absolute mess. I'm still dealing with them. You know, they have a loophole that needs to be closed and needs to be closed immediately. Because it's taking the township's power away. It's taking the conservation authorities' power away. And Transport Canada themselves is, is an author of destruction where, you know, the conservation department is concerned. But as I said, Transport Canada is its own nemesis, its own issue. But the, the development of properties, again, a lot of older cottages in the area, they will be redeveloped. But we have to ensure that the heritage of the area, the beauty of the area, what people come to the area to see remains. And egos are not what trumps. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. Mr. Bell, and then I'm going to, we've been at this delegation for forty minutes, so we're going to have to put a pin at this at, at some point.
Well, thank you. We, we've, our group has done a lot of research and it, it's interesting, in Ontario, we didn't ever come upon another jurisdiction that lacked an environmental advisory committee. They call them by different names, but everyone seems to have one. I mean, not that we necessarily have to have one, but it does give one the impression that this is a usual sort of approach to dealing with complex issues. There are a lot of people around here, many retired, who have a good background in biology and have valuable resources that they can educate those who are making decisions. And certainly as, as Brock Gurrell says, they're not easy decisions to make, but you need the knowledge. And if you've got that source of knowledge, for heaven's sakes, take advantage of it. It's free and it's simple.
Thank you. Okay, any final questions from council? At this point, we thank you very much for your delegation. We thank everybody for their comments and their questions. And council will take that delegation information back and see what moves forward from there. Okay, the next item on our agenda is staff reports. Operations report SR dash one three one dash twenty three, new fire station two exterior design. The motion comes forward by Council Fodey, seconded by Council Mayby, that the committee of the whole recommends that council direct staff proceed with the detailed exterior design of fire station two option blank as described in operations report SR dash one three one dash twenty three. So it will be up to the council to fill in the blank once we have some discussion. So the motion is on the floor and available for discussion. So, Mr. Holliday.
Thank you through your worship. I actually have Dino DiSano. He is our architect designer with Idea Inc., Integrated Design Engineering and Architecture, who we've hired for the design of the fire hall. And I believe Dino is going to walk us through the, the different options and are you online there, Dino?
There he is. Thank you.
Okay. So, Dino, would you like us to put the options on there? Would you like to share your screen and provide the options? Oh, I think we, we can't hear you. You might be muted on your end.
Or something in front of, no, you weren't muted, but there might be something in front of your microphone. Or you're muted now. Do you know, you're unmuted? Can you speak? Unfortunately, we can, still can't hear you.
Oh, there is.
There we go. Okay. And it's a headset. We can hear you now. Thank you.
I don't know what happened, but the technology did not work. Hopefully this thing lasts long enough to get us through. So yes, we can put up the options we presented to David last week. We sort of did a, just as a preamble, we did a wide range of options based on sort of discussions we've been having through the design process of the building. I understand that the chief has seen him as well at this point. And I think they've got some comments that they were going to feed back to me, I think after we did this presentation, so we can, we can put this up and I can kind of run through the kinds of things we've been thinking. Okay. Everyone see that?
We can.
Great. So we, we have a range. We have a range of options here. We worked with a sort of a particular material palette that, you know, we've done a few fire stations at this point. And so there's a sort of a palette of materials that sort of naturally comes to this type of building. Sort of a highlighting sort of function durability. And in our case, sort of working with the particular orientation of the building on the site, et cetera. So the, the range of options, and oh, sorry, I should add as well, there was certain features that we were sort of working with from the beginning, the idea of collecting rainwater on the roofs to be the, the firefighting water storage and storing it for, for use for firefighting. That's all been something that's been part of the discussion all the way through. So those kinds of things have sort of made it through to the design. Also, there's been some sort of budgetary considerations as well. This first one, we, we had worked with the idea of using butterfly roofs as part of the rainwater collection system. And we sort of played them off each other. But also had sort of a reduced version. So I'm going to, I'm sort of going to go from the, the sort of the, the more reductive versions and work up to the more sort of interesting versions. And, and talk a little bit about them and then we can discuss and I'm sure David has some insights because we've sort of spent a lot of time going through these. We, the, the basic palette of materials that we're working with is we're, we're using sort of a masonry, sort of a dark masonry lower portion of the wall. This is sort of repeated through all of the options. This is sort of for durability, sort of, sort of gives the building some solidity. We do have a sort of repeat feature in all of them where we, we, we extended the wall to create a screen to sort of hide. On the plan behind that screen, there's a series of the emergency generator, the propane tank and other things that we sort of wanted to screen from the road. So we sort of had that feature repeating. What we worked with was a sort of roof line using a combination of metal panels, as you see here. Red colored metal panels for the apparatus bay and the, the sort of the butterfly roofs, either both on the apparatus bay and on the office. And so that's how we've worked through on this particular option. We've got a flat roof, which is a straight parapet. Metal panels in the upper, we've sort of emphasized the, the signage of the station, emphasize the red on the apparatus bay. I mean, all the fire stations that have a little bit of red, they are civic buildings. They have a sort of a character in the community. And our particular case with this particular site, there is a view back to highway fifteen that we sort of wanted to emphasize. So we've always, all the options sort of worked with this sort of punch of, of red to announce itself. We, the first two options are pretty subtle where we went. We, uh, the first two options are pretty subtle, where we went from just doing red on the front apparatus bay to extending the red around the entire appar- apparatus bay using sort of, um, this was intended to be sort of an aluminum metal panel. Then we worked into some more dramatic options. We looked at the idea of uh, using, uh, black frames to complement the black masonry, working with metal, uh, you know, metal panels with uh, dark trim, uh, using some red to emphasize the entrance, like we did here, we sort of punched out a canopy. And then working with the geometry of the butterfly roof on the apparatus bay to sort of define, uh, the bay entrance with the with the red trim, as you see, using, uh, you know, in this case, uh, formed metal siding, corrugated metal siding. Again, extending that geometry, this is a much more dramatic kind of approach. Again, with the slope front wall, red metal panels, dark gray corrugated, dark gray masonry. And then really emphasizing the red on the parapet of the of the station. And we've also, in this case, pushed out the parapet to sort of create a shading device as well, as well as using it as a signage feature as we have on some of the others. We've sloped the parapet here, just to give it a bit of a sculptural. It's it's a very simple trick. We just lift up the parapet and it it gives it a bit of a slope, gives it as opposed to just being straight. And then finally, um, this was a recall to some very, very early concepts that we did where we had butterfly roofs on both the the what we call the administrative wing versus the office wing of of the building, sorry, versus the apparatus bay wing of the building. And both of these sort of dump into a a flat roof for the rainwater collection. On all, just to emphasize, on all the previous ones, we had gone to a flat roof on all of these instead of two slope butterfly roofs for sort of budgetary considerations. We've sort of run the numbers and we understand what the premiums are for these various schemes. And the, in this particular case, between these two, we sort of recalled the sloping of the parapet that would normally be with with the butterfly roof by by sloping the parapet on this option. And so sort of that's the 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 sort of the range of design elements that we've explored, uh, throughout this project. The, um, the, like I said, there's certain elements of this that where the the basic palette of materials remains the same through all the various options. And what we've worked with is sort of the roof lines, the parapet lines and sort of the interplay of materials.
Okay. So, um, we have the options for us, council, um, as far as figuring out which one is most, um, people have the most appetite for. I'm interested to hear opinions, uh, if anybody has a preference at this point, and then we'll try to hear from everybody. Go ahead, Council Fody.
Thank you, worship through you. Uh, Mr. DeSano, if I gave you four square walls and told you to compare the price of a flat roof or to pitch roof, what would your answer be? In dollars and cents?
The flat roof will be cheap.
How much?
Couldn't tell you offhand, but I can say we did a little bit of analysis for these particular options. Uh, the flat, the 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 sloped roof on both the apparatus bay and the, uh, the administrative wing, it's a, it's a cost increase for the sloped roof of about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, I have a few questions, um, as could be ascertained by my first question. I'm no fan of flat roofs. This township has a enough examples here of flat roofs in our township. And to me, it's the financial cost that keeps on costing. We've got examples of this building, the building out behind us, which is a split between a fire hall and a works bay garage. These buildings are not that old. They've been leaking constantly, frequently. As are other buildings in this township that are flat roof. As I indicated, I've never have been a fan of a flat roof, and that is why. If the goal is to collect water, there's eve troughs will do that. I noticed there isn't an eve trough in any of these designs, but it's not intended to be as they're flat roofs. I think my own personal opinion, we took a tour, all of us on senior management and council, a year and a half ago, of two new fire halls in the area. Neither one had a flat roof. I suspect these jurisdictions also had the option and chose not to go there. And I'm willing to guess why. Well, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
If I may, the, I mean, flat roofs are the most common type of roof by far, because they're economical, because they're, um, in some cases easier to maintain. A flat roof well edu- well executed, well implemented, shouldn't leak. It shouldn't, uh, it shouldn't do any of those things. I I'm, it's unfortunate that the the township has had a terrible experience with them. But like I said, good roof, flat roofs well executed will perform just as well as a slope roof. And, um, the cost savings aside, just just to explain what we're doing here. One of the reasons why, uh, we're doing rainwater collection, the way that we're doing it is just through our own experience with it. If you want to collect rainwater for effective use, you can't do it with downspouts. You have to do it with a flat roof so you can actually get good quality water in in the reservoirs. And so we we did, uh, something similar. We we did the the border crossing station south of you. And we did collect rainwater and we did gain quite a bit of experience doing that project. And our engineering division, which is 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 our own guys, um, had very strongly advised is that if you really want to seriously collect rainwater, use a flat roof. We can filter through the roof drains. We can collect internally rather than having a series of external, um, uh, rain gutters and downspouts to try and do it. So we'll have a better quality outcome. So that was one of the reasons why we're doing it this way. Um, and to the point of the the problems with the flat roof, again, that's that's a question of execution. Um, there are different types of membrane systems that we can use, um, both, you know, we we don't ever, you know, we always sort of stick with either modified bitumen membranes, which are very, very common. We've worked with PVC mem- membranes. There's something called TPO membranes that are becoming very popular right now. These are all sort of synthetic continuous sheets. So there's there's ways of, there's different materials available. There's, um, you know, good set of details, which were, you know, part of our mandate is to provide a set of details for construction and then to review the construction. There's also things that can be done during construction to ensure the success of of the roof's installation. So there's a number of things that we can do, counselor.
Just a couple of more questions, if I may. If you're doing a pitch roof with steel covering, what's your anticipated lifespan of that roof? I know the gauge of the steel and all that matters, but but give or take.
Should be about a fifty fifty-two, depending like again on execution, like a steel roof back in the day would have been fifty to seventy-five years. I still think you can get fifty years out of a well-executed steel roof. Um, the the kinds of roofs that we're looking at here are a little bit challenging to do with a normal standing seam type system, but we're still exploring how we would do them if this is the direction that we're going to go. But again, steel steel roof in general, that material in general, fifty years.
Thank you. I was hoping that was the range you were in. I personally partook of my father at the time in nineteen seventy-four of building a steel roof building that still hasn't leaked to this day. We put up another larger building in eighty-two. It has yet to leak. And yet I can point straight above my head here tonight. As I stated, and I'll I'll quit pounding that drum. I'm no fan of a flat roof, ever have been. It may come across initially as being cheaper, but you will pay every year from thereafter. And the material that we have in these halls aren't cheap, as we know at budget time. You know, they're fire trucks. They're meant to have the water contained within, not over top. Um, the only other little tidbit I would ask, I thought it was kind of a amusing in a way when I looked at all these proposals here. Leads on Thousand Islands Two and and such, not one of these pictures has the word fire hall on it, yet every fire hall I drive by, whether it's our municipality or the one I frequently drive by, two of them out in Rito Lakes, all has the name Fire Hall on it. I thought that was just an omission. I'll let somebody else make a few statements here. Thank you.
That's a good observation. Thank you, counselor.
I have Counselor Maybe and then Counselor Garell.
Thank you. You're worshiping through you. I again, reiterate that a flat roof is problematic. I look after eight of them. And I don't have one that doesn't have issues. And some of them are almost virtually brand new. And as well as the bitmen that is put on these is a toxic waste when it's gone. A pitched roof, metal cladding will last fifty to a hundred years. Rainwater collection can be done by oversized gutters down the side and then through underneath to the tank. The, uh, on a flat roof or a butterfly, you're going to have, um, a collection like a, um, a collection drain. There's a name for it. It's escaped me right at the moment, but you also have a building that's facing almost into the wind with the higher part. So in the wintertime, the snow is going to come over that equipment bay, dump onto the administration bay. And it's going to build up on certain times of the year. So you're not going to get any water off that. Um, having metal, the sun's going to warm it up a bit more and the water's going to run a little bit more freely. So it is important that, uh, we have that ability to collect the water. I totally agree. And to that point, I didn't ever see any quantity of water storage listed on any of the documents that I've seen over the last couple times that we've had this in front of us. And to that point also, I don't see a a current floor plan or whether it's even changed in any any dimension to give reference to the actual, um, overhead view of this to how the parking and the doorways all interact with each other. And, uh, let me go through my notes here, please, for two seconds. Um, the maintenance of a flat roof is way more expensive than any pitched roof, hands down. I can't say too much more about that, because I would definitely disagree with any flat roof. Um, and the, again, the floor plan, which I I am curious on seeing, because here we are, we're asking for increased costs to modify the outside of a building when we've cut costs on the inside of this building for fire services that we have said, okay, we can cut that out, we'll get that another time. Outside of the building to me means nothing if we don't have the equipment inside it to to for the firefighters to use. And one other thing I was curious, the outside you mentioned about masonry, why is it masonry? Why is it not metal cladded like almost every other building around? And you can still have the color differential, the dark brown, the red or the white. Uh, that's totally available in all the colors in, uh, cladding. And you get better insulation in a metal-sided building with denser, uh, insulation than a block building. A block building is going to have very minimal insulation on it with a built-up building. And the other part of that is also that a masonry building, if it doesn't have enough heat coming through the wall on a, and the super insulated buildings, the masonry starts to break down with the ice and water during the winter. Believe me, I know that one hands down with, again, the buildings that I look after that fracture easily without enough heat in them. So it does become more of a maintenance issue on the block. So let's go, let's make something that is, uh, maintenance-free but more adequate for the firefighters that are there so that they have everything they need to make this work. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Counselor Garell, go ahead.
I'll pass, uh, uh, your honor, I recognize how far out of my depth of water I am. Thank you.
Um, well, I know that staff has been tasked with our consultants to look at, uh, many different ways. So you know, in defense of the staff that have brought forward, uh, along with our consultants to bring these forward, they've been given a certain price range that we're supposed to, um, work within. And I can appreciate that pay now, pay later. Um, but based on the parameters that were given, this is, these are the options that we're being presented with. If you're asking that that staff and the consultant go back and redesign this based on pitch roofs and everything else, that's a totally different price point. And I don't know, and I understand that there's questions asked tonight in regards to that. Um, but I guess my question to the Director of Operations is if this is a stumbling block based on the fl- flat roof and I'm like Counselor Garell, I'm I'm not a builder. I don't, never built anything in my life, uh, maybe done the odd renovation, but you know, this is definitely out of my depth, so I'm looking for some guidance. Director, go ahead.
Thank you through your worship. Um, in terms of, you know, constructing the facility versus putting the putting the appearances inside of the facility, um, I've always been of the mind that you you construct the facility that you want to have and then you fill it up afterwards. And there's things that we can purchase afterwards. Mike and I've had these conversations and we can budget to to include things. So if we're constructing the facility that's going to last us fifty years, you know, it's going to cost us X, and then we can add the things afterwards through future budgets and and whatever and grants in order to to fill the facility with with the things that are are needed long term. Um, so that's sort of, I don't know, like, if you can agree to that, that's sort of been our our guiding principle as we've been moving forward is to focus on actually constructing the facility that we need for the long term. Um, in terms of the the collection on the roof with the, uh, like a trust roof with with sheeting, um, I'm, I think we can certainly explore that. We'd have to look at the capacity and there was in the drawings, a, it explained that the underground tank and the capacity for that, we were looking at four thousand gallon tank. Um, it's not in in this version, but in the previous one, we did speak about, uh, what the size of the tank was going to be. Um, so we're we're looking at a four thousand gallon tank. So to look at the design of the roof and and seeing if it will will fill that tank, I think that's that's something that we can work on, right, Dino?
That's correct.
Yeah. Um, so we'll we'll explore that option for sure and see that we're going to be able to to fill that capacity as required with a a slope roof instead of a flat roof.
So, um, would it be, um, Madam Clerk, that we would defer this motion and to have uh, alternative options with pitch proof to come back to council? Is that what we're looking for, ladies and gentlemen? And costing the difference in general terms? Go ahead, Counselor James.
I'd like to keep moving and I'll tell you why. This building was built by committee. And a lot of the problems with buildings is a result that it was built. We need a fire station up there. We don't need a lot of discussion about how to build it, because we've hired people to do it. I appreciate what you're saying and I respect it. But you know, this is what ties things up forever. And the cost will go up and up and up. More and more months we wait, the longer it will take to get that facility. So my view is we got to keep moving, take staff's direction and move on. Thank you.
Okay. So Ms. Kelman, do you have any feelings about this?
I agree with Counselor Jamison. I feel like if we just keep going back to the drawing board to argue different parts of it, it's just going to delay the project and it, as we've learned with other much smaller projects, the longer you delay, the more the costs go up. I love the butterfly roof idea. I've looked at examples in, um, other communities in other countries where it's used, because it was a new concept to me. I think it's wonderful. I actually depending on how the water collection goes and how fast it fills up the tank, I wish we could put the butterfly roof on both sections of the building, but at least having it on the apparatus bay is is good. Uh, I like also the idea of the additional expenditure to have the full parapet wall because of the shade it would provide to the office section. And I also like the darker color around the windows, but I feel like if we defer this now, this project is not going to start this year. And I understand the concerns about the flat roof. But I also appreciate what the the, uh, professional is telling us that is doing this plan that he thinks he's got the materials that will work. And I would like to move forward.
Okay, so Counselor Fody, go ahead.
Thank you, worship through you. Seems we have a engineer here. If you were to get to go ahead and put up a flat roof, what kind of guarantee will we have from your design work? Providing the construction is done properly, that, uh, it won't leak till X number of years.
Well, like, I mean, I can't guarantee that, but what you do have is you do have a, you know, a warranty that comes with your, you know, the installed roof once it's actually completed. That's that's what you have. And and the warranties, you know, the warranties for, you know, well-executed roof are anywhere from five to ten years, depending. So it's it's, and but it does come down, you know, I I will say, just in general, just to discuss some of the the concerns that have been raised, they're valid concerns, no question. And, uh, I've heard the the flat roof thing before, especially on fire stations. In fact, the previous fire stations, a lot of the previous fire stations that we've done ended up with sloped metal roofs as a result. Because of those concerns, so they're they're well founded. Um. But like I said, it it does come down to execution. It does come down to, you know, taking care. One of the things I will point out, I just want to make sure that everyone understood. There was a slope butterfly roof over the apparatus bay and the flat roof was only on the administrative wing. Everyone didn't see that, right? And we uh. We've always avoided doing flat roofs on the apparatus bay for the reasons that you guys mentioned because that's where the. The equipment is. So we've always only limited ourselves to doing it on the administrative wing, which is the the offices, chambers such. Uh the other thing I did want to address is uh counselor maybe's comment about the block walls. Where they're not solid block walls, counselor, they're uh they're just a cladding. So the the building, the building is going to be designed as as high efficiency as we can make it. The bare minimum in the building code is is actually a very, very highly insulated building. And we're going to probably try and do a little better than that. The the cladding, the masonry cladding is just like the metal cladding. There's. It's just, it's just the outer veneer. There's an insulated core behind it and it's it's really just. It's just, it's, you know, it's it's four inches on the outside. The reason we 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 propose a masonry because it was. Kind of the the most durable. Out of all the ones, you know, more than metal siding, more than all the other ones. So we've always sort of had it as the lower skirt because it does give that sort of sense of solidity as well. But could it be metal siding? Of course it can. It absolutely can. The the composition of the wall, the the parts is really doing the work, the installation, all that stuff, all that stuff stays the same. We're really just changing the cladding in front. Just to sort of respond to that comment.
I have the C O that wants to get in.
Uh thank you worship through you. Um. Director Operations, can you remind me, what's the total bill for the project?
Thank you through your worship. Um actually, I just received a class D estimate from. Uh from Dino the today. And the estimate is looking between three point two. So this is a plus or minus fifteen percent. Uh we're looking at three point seven six eight with a plus or minus fifteen percent on it at this point.
Okay, can I have a follow up? Okay, and a follow up. How much is the cost if we put? Um a butterfly roof over the office side of thing? And would a butterfly roof address to Counselor Fode your concerns about a flat roof if we put a butterfly roof over?
Go ahead, Counselor Fode.
If that question is to me, C O. Uh. I think the question was answered by Mr. De Sano here just a few minutes ago. My initial question was how long would the life expectancy be of a pitch roof clad in steel? His answer was fifty years. I pointedly asked him the guarantee of a flat roof and his answer was five to ten. I reversed those thoughts. If I was building that with my money. It has an expedited failure rate of eighty to ninety percent over a steel pitch roof. If I was paying that out of my pocket, it would be a done deal and it wouldn't be flat. To answer your question about the butterfly. I honestly don't know enough about them.
Okay, if it was a steel, uh no, I don't know anything about butterfly roofs myself. If it was a steel clad butterfly roof. Um perhaps Dino could answer that one. Is it, is it like a pitched roof?
It it is. I mean, it it is sloped. It's just sloped.
Inwards, right?
And it would be, we would, you know, target making it in steel. Um we're still figuring out how we're going to do that exactly. And to the point about the flat roof though, uh counselor is the uh. Most roof manuf- roof membrane manufacturers are offering. Anywhere between a five and ten year guarantee on the materials. There is the warranty that's offered by the installers on the installation. The roofs themselves properly installed, you know, with maintenance. Will last more than five to ten years. Will they last the fifty years of a steel roof? No. Should be able to get twenty five years out of a properly installed, a minimum twenty five years of a properly installed flat roof. So like I said, it's it's not, like I said, you're, I I hear your comments and you are not wrong. It's it's it it often comes down to a question of economics and other things, but um. The and it's unfortunate that the township has had those experiences of flat roofs, but. There's plenty of flat roofs that last a good long time and they don't leak.
It's looking like we may be having them again. Um it uh, well, I mean, your own answers proved that to me. It's just that I find it disheartening when we went on this tour and we saw a beautiful setup out here at Toledo. Uh kind of an L shaped T bone type uh both were picture of cloud and steel.
Mm hmm.
They're only about a three to four year advantage on us should we build within the next twelve eighteen months. It'll be interesting if I live long enough to compare the two buildings. I'm not going to dwell on this. I'm just expressing my opinion and what I've seen over a lifetime. That's a little bit of advantage comes with these white hairs. And uh I I'm no fan of flat roofs. I I'm just not and it's. Your own explanation tonight confirmed that. Thank you.
So go ahead, C O.
So I guess, I guess the point I was trying to get to is. If if a butterfly roof could address some of the concerns on about the flat roof. And the butterfly roof, adding the butterfly roof over the office costs, how much, Dave?
An extra twenty thousand?
Yeah.
On a three point, how much thousand dollar bill? So it's it's a pretty low dollar item. Uh in the grand scheme of things, if we added a a a pitch or a. A butterfly roof, which we've already got a a design for and it might be the way we can move forward on this or. At least to address some of the concerns of the flat roof. People, go ahead, Counselor Fode.
Thank you worship. Should we go this proposal that our C O Donkey has given with a butterfly roof? Does it cover? The whole of the flat roof? And then what's the snow load applications to a butterfly roof? Is there a? A wiring, heating mechanism up in there for a melt purpose to get that weight off there? Those those things would. Jump off a page at me.
Well, we designed, we designed for projected snow loads. That's part of the structural design of the building regardless of the type of roof. Or the real, we'll design for the snow loads. We've on every roof, even the ones that were just more traditional pitched roofs, we we put uh we put uh. Uh the deicing wiring on them anyways, because even 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 the traditionally pitched roofs. And this was the comment on the last one where, you know, we. We will end up with big ic- icicles down the side of it. So we've always put deicing or wires just to, you know, because this Canada, we especially. The ways the winters have been going with a lot of freeze thaw, there's going to be icicles, there's going to be uh the gutters will. Will clog up with with ice at some point in the winter in the freeze thaw cycle. So we've always put the deicing coils on regardless. Um we would have to do it with these kinds of roofs as well. These are just sort of precautionary measures that we do anyways because on this kind of building, you really need them. Um I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but.
Okay, so I'll let uh Counselor Maybe speak and then I'll make some comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um again, butterfly roof inverted steel, it's too low a slope, you can't get it sealed. So you'd have to use a bitman or a compound roof of some sort, but again, when you replace that roof, it's also toxic waste. So now we're having to pay for that and get rid of that roof. Again, a trust, a manufactured trust in a trust company. Uh it's going to be probably less expensive than the wood it's going to take to s- to beef up this roof, a flat roof. For snow load and the material that's on it because a bitman roof is not um lightweight. Whereas the steel is. And again, it. A sloped roof will always have rain run off it. And again, for a delay. Of of having this roof repaired every ten years minimum. Opposed to a roof that doesn't get repaired or even replaced for potentially a hundred years. I think is is very vital to the sustainability of our budgets. For a building that is so vital to our community. So. I still am with a pitched roof, wholeheartedly. I will not go for a flat roof ever. Thank you.
Okay, so. I'm gonna weigh in on my, what I see here. So um I'm. I was, as far as what was presented to us based on um what the design work had been. I like the darker building with no white windows, uh mainly because of being able to keep them clean, living on the water. Having spiders fly, manure, whatever you want to call it. It's. It I I think from a cleanliness point of view, the darker building. I think would be a better choice. That's my own personal preference. As far as the pitch roof uh discussion. Um you know. I guess when we engage these uh people as far as what's being built. And what's being built and the federal government just spent however much on the um. Hill Island build uh on that and. I can appreciate the fact that it needs maintenance and upkeep. Uh like all buildings, but with our asset management plan, that could be factored in. Um I I am concerned about going back to the drawing board and having to redraw this mainly because. We need to move forward on this because we've been sort of going back and forth. I know that Dave and the fire chiefs have been working towards trying to. Come to an agreement for the structure to get it uh moving forward. So the motion still stands on here, um but as far as. Uh getting the option that is most feasible, I guess I was choosing option five. Um five or four. But four has the flat roof, so um. And as far as what you you were number one.
I would have to combine options, sorry, through you, your honor. I would have to choose option one. But with the full parapet wall in option four, and I do agree with the C O. Given the overall cost of the project, I think it's worth the extra investment to put option five, the butterfly roof. On the office section as well. So that is not one option. That is sections of three options and I apologize.
Okay, Counselor Garell, do you have any way in on before? Which preference you had before the discussion?
Through you, your worship.
Yeah, um similar to what Angela just did, we just wanted to give you guys a broad spectrum of of color. Roofing options, parapet options. So there there is no option one, two, three, four or five. It's it's kind of, you know. How you envision the the facility as a whole. You know, the color was was to try to give you guys a a spectrum of color. Uh a spectrum of of the the facade, you know, a spectrum of of what the roof would like and. Obviously, we should have included something for for a trust roof as well and I I do apologize for that. Sorry, I just.
So.
Cut in, I just wanted to provide that information.
So really, and I just want to be clear because the motion here, I guess. When we're looking at these designs, it it feels like picking one and then. And then it's done type thing, but you're looking for more of structure. Um shape, size and color scheme is what you're looking for.
Generally, yes.
Generally, so this um.
We can tweak the color. If you're happy with an option, the color can be tweaked, obviously.
Okay, yeah. Mark James is having a stroke over there. Um I want aubergine. Um okay, so. I'm trying to deal with this from a procedural point of view because the way the motion is written is asking for option. One, two, three, four, five. Can. Is it possible to defer this to the council meeting? For further discussion and we can maybe take some of the feedback that you've received this evening and give us, I I'll be quite honest. Three options is lots. You see what I mean? Because if we get back, it's so take to narrow down what it is that we've talked about this evening. Whether it's adding a a pitch to one of the roofs, the color, does anybody have any o- opposition to any of the color schemes here? Go ahead, Counselor Fode.
Thank you worship. Maybe we could make it simpler by breaking the options in into the options. Like what option of roof, what option of color and break it down that way and come back next week and. If it's four and three or five and two.
Okay.
You know, something like that because I I I think we're all trying to incorporate the best of the best, which is understandable.
Okay.
It just make it easier, I I believe.
Okay, so I think I'm going to ask for someone to post a deferral to the council meeting next week. So I have counsel, counselor maybe and then Counselor Garell. To defer. To council on July the. Tenth, thank you. Okay, so just for clarity on this deferral. The expectation, this is clarity for staff, the expectation is is they'll be coming back with a more narrow choice selection based on discussion and feedback. Received this evening and one being a pitched roof of some sort, correct?
Yeah, no, I think.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to make sure that the deferral was clear and what the expectations were to come back so that. But I I think it is expected that we'll make a decision one way or the other as of next week so that they can move forward with this project. Any comments in regards to the deferral? Go ahead.
My final comment is to be clear that I am not discounting. Uh the good uh observations of my colleagues on council with respect to this. However. Um the longer this goes. Uh the less likely we are to get it done. So I'm personally against deferral because I'd like to get on with it. I'm concerned that, you know, then something else comes up. I wanted aubergine, aubergine and marigold coloring, but that was turned down. I mean, it can just go on and on. So that's my concern. Uh with this, but certainly not disputing the expertise of people on council. That know a heck of a lot more about it than I do. Thank you.
If if I may, your worship, I could add something. The the range of options was sort of, it was intended to sort of. You know, have a range to have a discussion about, you know, what the ultimate. Design will be, the one that's most representative and most appropriate for the community, et cetera, et cetera. So they were intended to sort of elicit that, you know, I like this or I don't like that. I think I think the idea of. Best feedback for us is to sort of have it as uh Counselor Fode suggests. Have some feedback on the basic color palette because that that basic color palette is, you know, applicable to. You know, we've sort of carried it through all the different designs. The color palette, you know, we can refine the materials that are going to manifest that color palette eventually and then. The the i- the idea of the of the roof profile. Are the kind of the two big questions that we've taken away from here tonight. And ultimately, there there will be sort of a finalized design that will come out of this process. So I think that kind of feedback for us and ultimately will be very useful.
And it really deferring it one week is not going to put us back behind the hayball. So I will read the motion uh to defer. So by Counselor Maybe uh and Counselor Garell seconded that the committee, the whole recommends that council defer operations report S R dash one, three, one dash twenty three. To the July tenth council meeting for further discussion with the recommended changes and details provided by council. Okay, are we good with that? Counselor Garell?
I'd like to be, however, I'm still uh. In the air on this roof design because if we move forward. Uh with a pitched roof, which. I think in the back of my mind, I'm leaning toward, there's costs associated with that and I'm not sure that. With our um deferral here, I'm not sure that.
That detail will come back to the council.
Comes back to council solid enough in one week. That seems a little tight, so therefore what would I see happening next week is a deferral. And that uh. I mean, in one week, can we come up with the?
Some general, will we be able to get some general costing? I think it's what.
You know, a change order. Sorry, had to say it.
Director Holiday?
Thank you through your worship. Um I think we're looking at at really two options at this point. Um we like the, we like the uh the parapet wall extended, if it's if it's a flat roof. I I think that makes sense, but we're not going to do an extended parapet if we're doing a uh a trust roof. It it just doesn't make sense. So we're we're really down to two options. Um so I guess if if council's leaning towards a a trust roof, then we'll remove the parapet wall. It makes it really simple for us. If we're we're going to go one way or we're going to go the other way and then. That's a poor, that's a poor ball.
But uh the question that Counselor Garell has as far as cost is concerned, we'll be able to get an estimate along with the changes next week.
Absolutely, um I'll defer to Dino. He may have that information already.
We can, we can. The kind of fire station you're describing, we've already designed. So. It's it's it's, well, we can, we can definitely comment on these costs. We can definitely comment on some of the 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 feedback that we've received today.
So the good news is because it's coming in back in a week, nobody's going to forget about the cost part of it because it's been duly discussed here. And it's not being deferred for months on end. So I think that we'll have enough information to make a decision next week.
Yes, but I will, I will come back with two options. One with the trust roof and one with with the the alternative roof.
There. Okay, okay.
Yeah, ask the designer. I'm sorry to do this. Can I ask the designer a simple question? If you were building an arena, an ice hockey arena, maybe two pads, what kind of roof would you put on it? Flat roof or a pitch truth?
It would depend on the size.
Big.
We we we'd be perfectly honest, we've done them both ways. We've done them both ways. It really depends for busy arena because of the structural system over the arena. That would have a big play into it. We just finished a recreational complex just east of us here. We used, it was a barrel roof, to be honest, because we used a pre-engineered building to do it. We're working on one in Brockville right now that I don't I don't know where they are, but they just found out that, you know, the the budget is significantly higher. And they're working through value management on that one. I don't know where that one's going to end up, if it's going to end up flat or sloped. I can think that it's probably leaning towards flat to save money. So there's there's lots of different answers to this. I will point out all of these rooms. The the building structure, for starters, is a steel structure. The kind of we 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 use the open web steel joists for in different configurations for the different kinds of roofs, whether it was flat or whether it's pitched, we're just going to manipulate that because that's we know that that works. We've we've done it successfully on 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 other projects. So just to sort of, I just wanted to pick up on some of the comments that were coming back. So there's lots of different ways to roof a building.
So, okay, so comment duly noted. And I just think that just to speak to the dark color, darker color. I know that there are other buildings that have been erected in this municipality in natural settings and this on this corner, it is a natural setting. It's surrounded by trees. Anything that's shiny or bright just sticks out like a sore thumb, which I can appreciate as a fire station, it should be visible, but I think with having the extra red will make a difference. And and I I I think we don't want something garish, if if that's the best way of putting it, Counselor Fode, and then I'm going to call the question.
Your worship, I don't think you realized it, but you've actually come up with a new color scheme tonight. Fly frequency brown. It won't appeal to some that have different color choices, but I like your thinking.
Very. Okay, so the motion to defer is being called. All those in favor of the motion to defer next week? Motion against it? Okay. Duly noted, Counselor Jameson, and it carries, so we will discuss it next week. And hopefully, Counselor Lackey can also be here to win. Okay. Next item is planning report S R dash one, two, nine, dash twenty-three. Wait, actually, I'm going to say, so it's eight o'clock. Does anybody need a comfort break? Or do you want to push their? No one has put their hands up, so I'm pushing through. Okay. Planning report S R dash one, two, nine, dash twenty-three, application for alteration to designate a property thirteen sixty-seven dash thirteen sixty-nine County Road to Ascot Town Hall. And the motion comes forward from Counselor Fode, seconded by Counselor Jameson, but the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the alteration to the heritage property application thirteen sixty-seven dash thirteen sixty-nine County Road to Ascot Town Hall for the work that includes repair and restoration of the exterior of the building as described in said application prepared by Tacoma engineers dated May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through to you, to the operations director. When reading this report, at first I was looking for any excavation around the foundation. Later in the construction notes, I did sign find something that alluded to it. But it didn't actually indicate that the whole building is being excavated or just certain sections where there were problem areas. That's my first question. I do have others.
Thank you through your worship. They've been able to isolate the amount of excavation required for this facility by dealing with the structural requirements on the main level. Initially, we thought we were going to have to get in behind the walls and do some some peers into the concrete or into the the existing rock to support the second floor. And it turns out that they've they figured out a way to do it on the first floor solely. So the the repairs to the foundation would be for the foundation itself.
Yes, okay, follow up, please. And you're referring to the L V Ls sistered up to the second floor structure that then is bolted to the exterior wall. And then so that carries load. So there's no post going down to the first floor, hence underneath the floor. Is there any other observations being done there to make sure that that floor is supported properly? Because there is some weight on that floor through our tour that we did a couple of years ago. Because I know there was discussion that we hadn't been able to get under there or nobody was really under there to know what's there. Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Through your worship, as part of the intrusive review that we did for the site, they did open up windows and they they did explore underneath the flooring at that point and determined what was what was underneath the floor. There is in addition to to the what's underneath, we found that there's a significant amount of of flooring. I think there's four inches of flooring on on each level, which is adding to the weight required for for the loading. So they're they're hoping to to reduce that at the same time on the the second level and not doing any additional alterations on the first if if not required.
So were there support piece, support members or wrong support footings underneath the floor?
I believe that the that's a good question about the the footings. I'm not sure about the footings myself personally. I know that they were satisfied with the with the substructure of the first floor in terms of the the beams that had been sistered up as well as how it was tied down into the foundation itself.
Okay, have another question, please. The the exterior work, you're having the chimney redone and capped mainly for the historic value of the chimney. But will there be any heat in the chimney to ensure that the brick doesn't fracture in the cold winters? Because as as a case in point, I have a chimney that's coming down because of that. This exact thing just happens to be a massive chimney, but that's another story. But because the because there's no heat in the chimney, the bricks during winter with the freeze thaw over the last three years have now fractured. We now have a twenty-foot crack in several places. So there is a program to take that chimney down. And that's what I mean is that the the brickwork without heat anywhere. And I took a parapet off another building once upon a day for the same thing. It didn't have any heat, but it was fully exposed to the elements. So it just froze and cracked and broke. And part of that wall actually fell down. That's what made us take the rest of it down. So that's why I'm saying there's there there needs to be heat in brickwork or stonework to make sure it stays together. And the restoration on the windows that was indicated, they're talking about just fixing certain areas. Are there any windows that actually have to be taken out fully and then rebuilt in their entirety? Again, there's a an architectural it's some dollars involved to to actually do a full restoration on a window. And just wondering if there was any in that condition.
Okay, so regards to the chimney, I will touch base with the architect on that. I'm I'm not sure that that had been considered, so I will make sure that it is. In terms of the the windows, they had done an assessment of the windows. Many of them were just spot repairs. And I think that they were hoping to engage somebody to do to do those spot repairs on site. I don't believe any of them were in a condition that had to be completely removed and replaced. But I think there was some work to the seals. And when we had the meeting with the heritage, they had indicated replacement of some of the seals as well. So okay, the the architect was on for that conversation and taken into consideration.
Okay, and just one note I just see that I had here on the foundation. Was there anything considered about waterproofing it? I know that it's basically an infilled foundation, so there's very little requirement for that. But the building that I presently have under under is four times the size of this particular structure. And we've actually excavated the whole thing and every mortar joint has had issues. So it's been taken out and refilled actually with the same product that's spec for this project and then waterproofed on the outside. So that's why I only bring it up. I'm not sure, maybe the engineer on this one has deemed it differently. And that's why I'm kind of just bringing it up as as a question.
Separate from the Springfield House, this one is is elevated. And I don't think they felt that it was required for this to have the it it seems to be at the high point of the property where everything sheds away from this this facility. In terms of waterproofing, we'll we'll certainly be looking at that when we go to do the Springfield House. Because it's a, they call it Springfield House, and I understand for.
Through it.
Yes, yeah, but from what I understand, the the water filtration underneath the Ascot facilities hasn't been a concern.
And I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay. So Counselor Fode?
Thank you, worship through you. I assume that all this presentation before us is to to move forward this year, or that's the intent? This work?
Uh, yes, actually, I've been having conversations with the architect about looking at the inside work as well. And so the initial work that they had completed was was basically the the structural and the exterior repairs. But we want to tie this in as one big project and and be able to put a bow on it when we're done. So that's the the next stage for us is to to proceed with doing the the non heritage type work, the design for that.
So this is before council because we're altering a heritage building. Otherwise, there just would be a building permit issued and the work would be done. So any further comments or questions in regards to this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, all those opposed, and let's carry. Thank you. Next item on the on the agenda is planning reports S R dash one, two, or one, three, two, dash twenty-three municipal heritage proper properties register. And so Counselor Kellman is leaving the room. So the motion comes forward from Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Fode, that the committee, the whole recommends that council adopt the municipal heritage properties register as presented in Exhibit A to planning report S R dash one, three, two, dash twenty-three to facilitate the register to be posted to the township website as required by the Ontario Heritage Act. Discussion on the motion. Go ahead, Counselor Fode.
Yes, I had it on. Thank you, worship through you. Just an observation, what constituted some of these cemeteries to be designated when the majority of others were not? Is it because of who is buried there? I I'm just curious.
Madam Planner, do you have any answers for that?
Well, everyone would have been designated or listed through a resolution from the a recommendation from the Heritage Committee of the Day to Council. Some of them that are just listed wouldn't meet the current requirements under the Ontario Heritage Act for list. They may not. I'm not saying they wouldn't. They may. But there's more of a requirement now in terms of looking at the requirements for designation. So it would need to be either associated with a historical figure. It would be the context of it in terms of the location, the significance of the building or the structure and the property. So I'd have to look at each one individually to understand what it is. I know that some of them are simply listed. So recently, council, recently, last year, council listed the cemetery on Suites Corners Road. That was listed partially because of the importance of there were some people, I think, that were identified within that one, if I recall the description correctly. It was also the association with the church and the age and the importance of the community in terms of the context. So the age, the importance of the site in the context of the local area and the development of the community. So each of them could have very different reasons. Some of them are, as I said, because of who may be there. But others are because of how a community grows and evolves around the church. And so it would be an example of the evolution of the church and the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let's carry. We'll ask Angie to come back in. The band's back together. Okay, the next item is six point four Corporate Services Report S R dash one, zero, eight, dash twenty-three Social Media Policy. Moved by Counselor Jameson, seconded by Counselor Fode. At the committee, the whole recommends that council grant three readings and final passage by law number twenty-three dash zero, four, zero being by law to repeal and replace by law number fifteen dash zero, three, two to establish a social media policy for the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. Any comments, questions? Go ahead, Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess in reading it, I was kind of totally unclear if there's calls and notes, what's changed from the past bylaw on this one.
So do you, who wants to tackle this C A O or the I T guy? We'll let the I T guy go. Thanks, Tom. Move the the slider. There you go. Leave it to the tech guy who can't figure out the camera.
Needed some technical support. I'll take my job. I appreciate that through your worship. Thank you for the question. Overall, we've we've gone through a modernization of the policy to reflect the current standards, the current practices and social media with other municipalities that we compared with. But at the same time, we've all certainly noticed a change in the behavior of society and the openness to speak freely on social media platforms. So we've wanted to do our best to protect our staff. The the new provincial right to disconnect policy to ensure that we're not addressing social media comments in the off hours from home with feeling any pressure about job security and things like that. Certainly to to offer some guidance, some terms of use, if you will, for the public and how they can interact with us on our social media platforms as well. That sort of stuff wasn't really detailed in an easy to digest fashion. So that was the best effort that we wanted to put forward through this update to this policy.
Go ahead.
Thank you, worship through you. Also, the the new policy, as noted in the staff report, it reflects an update to against the previous policy or an update of the previous policy where just procedurally, we're we're trying to have moderation administration of our social media presence done through our communications team rather than through the C A O's office or through the responsible departments. Part of the whole plan with the communications, as I've had the opportunity to talk to council before, is to have develop a coherent look and feel and have some coordination on when things get posted, how often they get posted. And so bringing it all under to reflect that under social media, all of that stuff is the purview of the communications department rather than having it all bits and pieces all over the place. Just lends a certain amount of uniformity and credibility, and it controls the messaging a little bit better and establishes once again that that our social media is is kind of a social, a source for news while directing everybody back to our website as the primary source for news. It also, I think the the clarification under the new policy on on what staff can and can't do. And also what the expectations are for the public when they are commenting on our social media. I think it's a little more clear under the new policy than under the previous policy. So I I I think now we we've got a basis of everybody knows what what the rules are. We'll publish the social media policy. It'll be on our website so that people who want to comment know what's acceptable and what isn't and what's going to happen if they choose not to follow the. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. The other policy too, it was good at its time, but it just sort of reflected, you know, there was like three platforms and there's so much more else going on out there. So this kind of just refreshes things and makes things a little more modern.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did notice that in the document, it didn't mention anything about council. So.
We have a council code of conduct that.
I was just wondering whether it coincided or not.
The code of conduct, of course, applies the mayor's quite correct. And so, but you know, the the rules of engagement the council are are kind of the same as what the public would be.
Thank you for the clarity. Any further comments or questions in regards to the social media policy? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Let's carry. Next item is six point five Corporate Services Report S R dash. Next item is six point five corporate services report SR dash one three three dash twenty-three twenty. Twenty-three youth bursary awards. And the motion comes from councillor Gurrell, seconded by councillor Kelman, that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the youth bursary awards to Sage O'Connor. In the amount of five hundred dollars, Lane Morenci in the amount of three hundred dollars and Teresa Cardy in the amount of two hundred dollars. Discussion on this motion. Go ahead councillor Kelman.
Thank you worship and for you. Um, I would like to congratulate the the those young people. I would also like us to consider going and if we could just make a note about this. Um, in the budget for the next year and consider increasing these amounts. I think given the rising cost of everything, tuition in particular. Um, I would like, I I would like to see if we could increase the amounts. And also just um, in the scoring criteria, I know it was considered that way this year, but it just should be officially. Instead of uh, scoring based on athletics, it's actually based on extracurriculars. So if we could correct that for the scoring criteria, just going forward. On the the score sheet, it actually calls it athletics.
Go ahead, Mr. C.
Uh, thank you worship and through you. Um, this was uh, my first opportunity to participate as an evaluator on the uh. The the youth bursary uh, grants. And uh, I I'd just like to say thank you to town councillor Fordy and councillor Kelman for um, being part of the uh, the evaluation. Committee along with uh, Tracy Holland, our supervisor of communications and community engagement. Um, going through the process helped me kind of see that there are some tweaks that we need to make to our internal process on the scoring sheet. But also on the application. Um, as well, I think there's a few things that I'd like to tweak as well and a few more questions I'd like to have applicants ask, answer in a little more depth. And uh, while we're at it, we'll take another look. Uh, we'll do a review of the policy. And uh, we will certainly take your comments into consideration while we start planning the budget um, starting in August. Um, and see what we can do if we can uh, we can increase the uh, the amount or at least put it for councils consideration.
Okay, councillor Fordy.
Thank you worship through you. Uh, I must say, uh, had the privilege of doing this, uh, I was impressed. The uh, candidates that that did apply for this, it was quite intriguing. Listing their qualifications and uh, and the amount of participation they provide throughout the township and they reflect literally every. School district we have. But uh, I must say, an impromptu conversation this past weekend. Um, the question arose, has the decision been made? Who won this yet? And maybe it was last weekend, I suppose, because at that time we'd had not. I said, I don't know. I haven't seen the results. But um. All I want to say is there are some very intriguing suggestions come out of former high school students. About what they would like to see tweaked about this and I'll pass that on when the times do. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Maybe.
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Um. Also, uh, councillor Jameson and myself had the opportunity to do this last year, I believe. And again, similarly, we also found that the forums maybe needed to be tweaked a little bit. To be more encompassing of the overall person, not just athletic ability. But also the amount of money that uh, was given out. Given, and I think we even meant to or commented on it then, that it shouldn't maybe be increased also. So again, it's a budgetary thing. So uh. Uh, your words cut it, Phil. Thanks.
We'll throw Phil in at the deep end. Right off the cliff, right? First go around. So. Um, okay, so the motion still stands of the three winners, Sage O'Connor, Lane Morenci and Teresa Cardy. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. I uh, had the benefit of knowing one of them personally, just having to deal with her at the grocery store. And uh, seeing her at the hockey rink and she was definitely um, a worthy recipient. So thank you for the committee who's made that decision. Um, now, moving on to unfinished business, any unfinished business? Councillor Maybe.
Thank you. Two items, just my favorite one. The four oh one light, any information?
Well, I know that I'm going to see the minister at um. At A M O for a different reason, maybe I'll just. Slide it in, slide that in. But maybe uh, you had your meeting or you have a meeting coming up with the M T O people? Sorry to put you on the spot, Dave.
That's okay. Um, thank you through your worship. So the the last time that that the mayor and I had met with with the minister. Um, they had committed to to taking a look at a few things. Uh, we did not receive any any feedback since that point, or we have not received any feedback since that point from from the minister or their office. Um, we hosted a. And I forget the name of it. It's a a working group that we have that involves uh, on with the ministry. There's uh, Parks Canada. And and a few other organizations, the counties. Is represented that as well. Um, so we hosted this meeting and we do every spring. And uh, M T O did not come to the meeting. Um, when we met previously with with M T O. It was requested that instead of reaching through the the local uh, Kingston branch. That we instead go through the the upper echelons. And and so we did with with no response. So that's that's where we're at with this, that uh, we followed the proper protocols and we're. Underrepresented by by the ministry.
Now, just have to keep driving down that road, see if we hit the stop sign. Yep, okay. Um. And my second question is uh, C N. Again, uh, they they're up to their shenanigans. I know that they haven't taken this beaver beaver dam. But uh, crossing directly behind me that a resident or a taxpayer has. Uh, put, they put it in, they take it out, they put it in, they take it out. And at this point, they've taken it out, so he can't access his land again. Um, I I really don't understand why it's happening or why C N finds this amusing perhaps. Um, but.
Could be a safety issue, but.
Yeah, it's very frustrating for that particular resident.
Would this not be a transport Canada issue? Cause I don't believe that they can cut off access to somebody's land.
Um, I'm unaware of of the situation, but I will reach out to C N and and try to get some information on that.
So if you can work with the driver.
I can give you the name later too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further unfinished business? Seeing none, I'll move on to other business. No other business, notices of motion, any notices of motion? Okay, and mayor's update. I will try to be brief as possible. There remains an active fire on Eden Grove Road currently and uh, we thank all of our volunteer firefighters, uh, our chief and staff. That are working hard to um, alleviate any further potential for fire. Um, thankfully, no animals, no um, humans uh, damaged at this point. Property can be replaced, animals and humans not so much. So um, please avoid the area just below the hill for in Lansdowne on Eden Grove Road if at all possible. Because there are multiple pumper trucks moving back and forth. Also, thank you to the neighboring municipalities who've come to our assistance and staffed our other um. Fire stations in lieu of us being there as we're on scene. So. Um, and the ironic part is is that we had a uh, reminder that the partial partial burn ban had been lifted as of June twenty ninth. Please call to activate your permit prior to burning and continue to use caution with all open air burning. Just a caution, I believe that we might be seeing that uh, burn ban come back on. Um, we have not received the rain that was expected and I would imagine that we'll be getting a notice here from the chief in the next few days if. Unless the weather pattern changes and we actually do get the rain that they keep calling for. I hope everybody had a wonderful Canada day. Um, I know that uh, I was able to participate. In a couple of ceremonies and thank you very much to councillor Maybe uh, for being part of the ceremony in Ganar Nakwe and councillor Fordy was there. Um, and councillor Kellerman who um, got dragged into a parade that she wasn't expecting to walk in in Sealy's Bay. We had a great time. Uh, it was great to see so many people out despite the tornado warnings that were coming across our phones. Uh, we braved it, chanced it, and uh, there was lots of great celebrations. So. Uh, just a really robust thank you to all the volunteers and the local people who make the effort to make these events happen. Without them and their dedication, we wouldn't have the fun things to do. And that goes for um, Schoolhouse Jam in Rockport. Um, I had a chance to pop by there a week ago and it was very well attended. Lots of fun, great to see some faces I hadn't seen in a while. Um, and it's great to support a local organization who. Um. Continues to maintain uh, one of the gems in our settlement areas. So thank you to the people at the Rockport, uh, Rockport Rec Hall. And the Schoolhouse Jam. Um. So Cycling Ontario is bringing the Ontario Cup Road Race to Lansdowne on July the eighth, known as the Lansdowne Classic Road Race. The event will be held at the Thousand Islands Elementary School and will feature top cyclists from all over Ontario competing in the Ontario Cup Series. So mark that on your calendars. So maybe. That's uh, July the eighth, so that'd be this Saturday coming. And we would also wel- like to welcome Aiden from Digital Main Street to T L T I. He will be supporting our businesses with online presence and helping them receive a grant to help improve their online uh, work. So that they can improve their sales and um. And recognition. We are currently renovating the lobby here at the township office. Visitors may experience some noisy and dusty conditions until August twenty fifth. And we thank you for your cooperation and patience during this time. Few other things, um, thank you to all the staff who participated with Mrs. Easton's class that came to see the township. They were. Um, I wasn't able to be here at a meeting to be at, but uh, I know that they were very excited to be here, excited to meet people. Excited to find out about building permits and taxes and fire trucks and everything else. So. Uh, there's a nice thank you on the wall in the lunchroom. Um, two million dollars were raised, was raised uh, at the Ride the River event. Down at um, the Park Store Facility, uh, Hux Marina. Um, that was a week ago as well on the twenty-fifth, or a week and a half ago. Um, and it was staggering. So the community came together, raised just a slightly over five hundred thousand. There was an anonymous donor who matched that uh, by five hundred thousand and then another anonymous donor that gave a million. So the two million dollars that was raised is going towards an M R I machine, which will obviously serve the general public here and our loved ones. And friends and neighbors. So um, I think they're at ten million dollars and they have to get to twelve to get there. So. Don't be surprised if there's other uh, opportunities to fundraise and obviously this is very important to the community that it serves. Um. On July the tenth, at one P M at the Lansdowne uh, Library Branch. There will be an announcement at one P M with Minister Clark. Um, so if any councillors would like to attend or any members of the public, please do so. Um, come and see our wonderful library staff and enjoy some fellowship. Uh, also, I would like to reiterate and that we were able to award. A very deserving individual, Frida White, uh, volunteer recognition here at the Lansdowne Community Building a week ago. And uh, it was truly my pleasure and honor. So um, thank you councillor Jameson and councillor Kelman, who were also in attendance with staff. Um, I've known Frida all of my life. Frida is one of those people who even at the age of eighty-five continues to have suggestions. And thoughts about how we can make things better here. And she is the epitome of a community champion. We wouldn't have the community building that we enjoy now. Um, and because of her and four other members of the committee, I think it was four, not five. Um, that building wouldn't have existed. Um, and we are still benefactors from that work that they did. So. When um, when people often. Will make comments about. Things that are expected from the municipality. Um, it would be really great to see some of those champions rise from the ashes, if you will. Um, to see how can I help? Um, and I'm not saying that because it's not our responsibility. It's all of our responsibility. Obviously, we're here to support this as a municipality, but it does take a community to do these things. So. Um, please feel free if you have any ideas or things you would like to see done in the community. Uh, we'd be happy to see you step up. And lastly, I would like to say happy July fourth to all our neighbors. Uh, across the way, I got to sit on my porch last night and watch Clayton fireworks. So that was lovely. Didn't have to even go, didn't even have to get my passport out. So. Um, happy Fourth of July to uh, our friends and neighbors who often come to see us and we often go to see them. Any other announcements or anything I've missed, folks? Go ahead councillor Maybe.
Uh, my one question was more on the fire ban. Um, uh, cause I have a burn permit and originally I thought it was, you could have the burn pan, but burn. Permit, but you didn't have to call in. So I'm wondering what's changed or did I not get the right information? Uh, just a query.
So um, in the chief's absence, I'll endeavor to answer that question. If you are doing a burn barrel or brush burning, you need to call in. If you are doing a chimney uh, thing or just a little campfire, I don't believe that you have to call in.
But. I think that is the, I know there's been a lot of stuff online about this and maybe we should need, we should clarify.
I I do believe um, uh. The chief is, I'm not sure where his mind is a hundred percent uh, on the burn ban, but I believe it will be a partial burn ban. So that people that uh, can still have campfires and that sort of thing, but no big burning.
Yeah. So uh, we desperately need rains, not only burn ban purposes, but also farmers. So please send your prayers up. Mm hmm. Any other comments, questions, announcements? Seeing none, a motion comes forward from councillor Kelman, seconded by councillor Gurrell, that the committee of the whole adjourned. All those in favor? All those opposed? And we're carried. Thank you, everyone.